Meeting to order and rise for the pledging.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands by nation under God, indivisible, and with just one soul.
Susie, roll over please.
Councilmember Groves.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers. Councilmember Salisbury.
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Here. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion or changes? Sue?
Councilmember Groves.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salisbury.
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic.
Yep.
And Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Citizen discussion fragments not on the agenda. Come on up.
Do anything.
Name and address.
Okay. Nicole Lintman, 10988 Council Drive, Lowell, Michigan, 49331. Hello, I'm here on behalf of Lowell Pride just to share a little bit of information about our event that we had this weekend. On behalf of Lowell Pride, I would like to take the opportunity to talk to you about the impact we made this weekend. One year ago, I had an idea to have an in-person Pride celebration in Lowell. I grew up in a similarly small town in the U.P. and know what it's like to feel alone and misunderstood. I reached out to some truly amazing people and asked if they would like to help make Lowell Pride a reality, and they stepped up. Together, we created an event focused on love, acceptance, understanding, and mutual respect. These are qualities that we should all be striving for regardless of our sexual orientation or gender identity. Everyone who walked through our event on Saturday was overwhelmed by the positive image they felt. It was a day full of magical moments like this. Kids getting to be authentically themselves with the full support of hundreds of people in their community. We heard time and time again from young people how they felt seen and loved and safe in Lowell, and for some of them, this was the first time that they could say that. We had a wall of love and amazing moms and allies who blocked out the three Lowell protesters who refused to leave our space. They were so effective in blocking them out that we had so many people say they didn't even know that anyone was there. We are a community used to taking care of our own, and we did so beautifully. Our ambulance crew needed two ice packs and a Band-Aid in the nine-plus hours that they were on site. Everyone stayed hydrated and safe, if maybe a little bit sunburned. Our vendors and volunteers are already asking how they can come back to be involved and come back again next year. It is not hyperbole to say that we saved lives on Saturday. If you attended our LGBTQ 101 panel discussion, you learned that just by validating a young person with using their proper pronouns, their name, and respecting their existence, you dropped the LGBTQ youth suicide and self-harm rates to the same level as the general population. For specific statistics, a 2012 study showed that 84% of trans youth under the age of 24 have serious suicidal ideation. 52% of trans youth will attempt suicide, and 47% will succeed. One save a person in their life reduces that risk of suicide by 76%, and on Saturday, we showed up hundreds of those people. We made that happen on Saturday with over 60 volunteers, 50 vendors, 25 sponsors, and hundreds, maybe even thousands, of attendees. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Showboat Insurance Lowell Business, number eight.
Yep. At our last city council meeting, we discussed the issue pertaining to the insurance for the showboat. Wednesday, May 26th, I met with Lowell Boat Showboat Six organization to share what was discussed. At the meeting, the group was interested in reimbursing the city for the coverage, mainly because we believe there is a way to complete the restroom construction much quicker than anticipated, and the funds will need to be utilized for that project. The topic of the restrooms will be discussed at the June 21st, 2021 city council meeting with a plan to fund the entire project. Anyhow, Jessica Wood participated in the meeting with us, and we discussed the reimbursement option for the showboat. She said that while they are still in the process of submitting all of the paperwork to be filed for Lowell Showboat Six, we could not establish any sort of agreement with them until the Lowell Showboat Six nonprofit organization is recognized as such by the state of Michigan. However, once the nonprofit organization is established, the city and Lowell Showboat Six can enter into an agreement. Lowell Showboat Six also asked me to look in the possibility of seeking a lesser value to insure. They wanted to see if we could get a quote PLPD version of insurance for the showboat, meaning if the showboat was a total loss for some reason, we would not insure to rebuild a showboat but to cover any environmental costs for removing the showboat from the river. They also asked to possibly seek a rider for the interim time in the short term if we could not have the boat insured in time for this week. I talked to Chrissy Aaronhurst, our agent from BHS regarding this. He immediately told me that the cost of any short-term rider for the showboat would be more than the proposed policy, so he told me that was not really an option. However, he did get back to me about the other issue. This past weekend, I received a correspondence from him. He stated the insurance underwriters would not cover a lesser amount than the full replacement cost. This is mainly due to reinsurance agreements they have. What this means is that they only have so much value for their claims on their books that they can show, and any excess beyond what they can carry on their books is insured by a separate entity to cover the claim one has ever filed. And from what I understand, this creates a hardship for the underwriters if this happened, and as a result, they do not cover situations for lesser than the full replacement of the insurance. I've attached the amounts in your packet for the different levels of coverage. My recommendation is to select the $3 million liability insurance with a $5,000 deductible for $8,250 per year. Also, select the property coverage of 2.7 million with a $50,000 deductible for $25,600 per year. Total cost for both policies is $33,850. Once Lowell Showboat Six becomes formalized, we can enter into an agreement with them to seek reimbursement for the insurance coverage. I recommend the Lowell City Council purchase the $3 million liability insurance with a $5,000 deductible and the $2,700,000 property coverage with a $50,000 deductible at a cost not to exceed $33,850. I would then recommend seeking reimbursement from Lowell Showboat Six once they become recognized as a nonprofit organization by the state of Michigan. So, one thing to add, as I stated before, the biggest issue with this boat is it's a barge. It doesn't adhere to U.S. Coast Guard standards. It doesn't adhere to... It adheres to the building code, but nobody really wants to take jurisdiction because it's on water. And our insurance agent, they contacted 12 different maritime insurance entities who fund primarily marine insurance, and eleven of the 12 wouldn't even provide a quote. This was the only company that would even consider a quote. So, you know, we tried, we reached with, we've talked to three other companies, two other companies to try and get a price on this. We couldn't get anything. Unfortunately, I don't think there's a... I don't think we're going to get anything different. So, and the boat, I mean, the only risk you could have is you could not put property insurance on the boat, but that's a huge risk. And if you did that, you could just, you know, you could do the liability, but the liability would actually go up to about $10,000 if we didn't have a property insurance. So, I don't think, I wouldn't recommend doing that.
That insurance game is quite the racket, huh?
Can you?
You think?
So, I got a question for Jim. They're good with, once they get their 501(c) done, then?
Well, that could be a totally different committee than what we're dealing with today, and those five or six people that are part of that 501(c) will have to be talked about and have to be part of the agreement. So, I'm not sure what that group looks like, who that's going to be, but today, I would say the majority of them are willing to do that, but whether they're going to be on that committee, I'm just not sure.
I would imagine all that one or more of the three of us would still be on it. I would assume.
Yep, from what we're looking at, there'll be two people from, one from each Lowell Township, Virginstown Township, one from the city, one from the council will be acting as a liaison, and then there'll be some at-large people, maybe somebody from the Chamber will be on that, so, yeah.
Another question for Jessica. What happens if we do this and then we can't come to a repayment agreement with the showboat? Do we just cut the insurance off and tell them they're on their own and then we're out that line?
That's certainly something that I would put in that agreement. And I would also put something about a continuing obligation for the nonprofit to insure it so that it's not an ongoing expense to the city. And I think that has to be the case.
If we cancel, pursuant to your earlier remark, if we canceled the insurance in August, I don't think they're going to refund the premium.
Oh, no, that's not what I mean.
Okay.
Yeah. Because we're only doing this for the first year either way.
Right, yeah, and I think.
I'm just concerned that.
Might take four months to get that 501(c) to be put together, maybe Jessica.
It can, yeah. Yeah, maybe once you turn it over to the IRS, you really don't have any control over the timing, so.
I have a few questions. First, is this something that was not even thought about? When the original "we want a showboat" conversation happened, was how would we insure the showboat so we can make it a venue that's making profit for our city? So, it's a true asset to our city? Was that in the discussion?
It was in the initial discussion, and then we were delayed on construction, delayed on being able to hold events and bring in money, and it just kind of fell through until now.
Yeah.
But there was a lot of things that started out like, okay, the committee's going to do this, then turned into a city problem, then, you know, certain people don't want to deal with it, and other people don't want to deal with it, so.
So, I guess that's my concern going forward, right? Is this just going to be a volley match between who wants to take care of it and who's responsible? So, that's my main concern. Obviously, I want the boat insured. I want it to be an asset to our city. I think it's beautiful. I think it's great. I'm concerned about who's going to be held responsible for this going forward. And any animosity that's going to come from that situation.
Yeah, because that $33,000 has got to come from somewhere. It's going to come from the roads that we're now starting to repair, right? Is it going to come from, chief can't get a part-time officer because, well, we just don't have the money, sorry, chief, you know? And then I got to ask myself, is that boat done work? Not having the extra patrol officer that we desperately need to keep our citizens safe? I'm good with the loan, one time, one time.
Yep. And I'm not particularly happy about it.
So, whatever we're talking about now, you're going to break back another agreement if Jessica does it up? So, this is just like, are we willing to? I'm still, man, we've been fighting that zero taxpayer, pay-per-dollar narrative for a long time, and I don't know whether I even want any part of it.
I can tell you that in the original budget or fundraiser, they had put in a amount to ensure the boat, they never thought that this was going to be $35,000 because we didn't have a completion and all that stuff. I think they may have thought maybe in the $27,000 range, something like that, maybe 25.
Their early numbers were, we ended up finding out, were wrong anyway. They were woefully low. Remember when we had that big conversation with them, and it was old data that they were using, and it just, so.
But then they tried to bring in new data, and they didn't like it. Well, that was part of the issue, is that we were presenting information, and we're not, and so. Well, just because you don't like something doesn't mean that's wrong, right?
Or untrue.
Right. Yeah.
We're sort of in a corner. I don't want to see that thing sitting... I mean, is it insured now?
Yes. It'll be insured until they turn it over to us.
To the end.
Wolverine. Yeah, I can get it, basically, I can get it insured by them tomorrow if the council approves this tonight. So, it'll be insured tomorrow by them. But it's construction insured. The construction is insured right now, yes. So, because of the work they're doing here.
Now, I'm going to ask my brother to drag it out.
I was going to say.
I think we'll see that this weekend.
When are you going to get things finished by May of next year?
Punch list.
Yeah, they should be fine. Just let them exposed out. No matter what, you've got to have a liability for Friday.
So.
Yeah.
But the liability, what's liability?
So, is construction, is that done?
Pretty much. They're still going to do their punch lists and all that, but it should be.
So, if we have insurance and they're still working on the boat, how does that work?
They would still be insured. They would still be insured. But we would still need liability for other. We have to have liability for our events. Whether they're still.
I think when we step foot on that boat on Friday night at the Gale, we need to have some form of a liability insurance.
No, I'm not saying we shouldn't. I'm just wondering if it's under our insurance and they're still working on the boat, how does that work?
Yeah, because I was in the trades, and that comes, how that all ends is kind of... It's not just so much they hand us the key. Michael, I have to walk through it, make sure all the punch items are done, and it's a little bit more involved than just, yep, here's your key, we're done, write me a check. So, it's a little bit of a process, but no, I think.
Worst-case scenario, there would be two insurances in effect, and that's when the insurance companies argue with each other as to who, because someone from Wolverine fell off the deck and bumped his head, then they'd fight about that. So, if we need to make a decision tonight, correct? Because we don't have any time.
Correct. So, and I did talk to the, I did talk to the committee. The people in the group that Jim was with, they were fine with the reimbursement. But that's the committee right now. Right. But I think that there's things you can do if they don't want to. Yeah, but then we're out $34,000 of taxpayer money, which the narrative for three years.
I'd much rather be out of it once than soon than the next 100 years after showing it out.
I could be wrong, but I know when I cancel my normal insurance before the year expires, they pay, they give you parrot amount back. That may be an option. I don't know.
So, Jessica, you don't know how much longer it's going to take then for them to get that 501(c).
We have several actually that we're working on right now, and I mean, it's just, it's the IRS, so you can ask them to make an expedited decision, but you're usually looking at a few months. So, it's just out of our control with that one, but.
Are we forming the committee for the 501 before we get the 501?
I don't think we can do that yet until we get all the paperwork filed with the names. Jessica?
I'm sorry, what?
Are we trying to form the committee before we get the 501 confirmed?
Right, well, so, how that works is there already is a committee, and so, right, and so for now, that's the committee that authorizes the formation of those documents. So, we're good. You don't need to form a new committee to do that. And really, what you're asking is for the IRS to recognize you as a nonprofit organization as you exist now. So, does that answer your question?
Who knows saying there's going to be a different committee making this?
There's going to be some additions to that.
Okay.
We're looking at seven, I believe, and right now, there are five.
So, who makes the decisions on who is and is not on?
Well, what we talked about is right now, it's a chamber, city, the 501's, it's an entertainment venue. We want it to be a community, do you think?
Correct.
So, we reach out to Virgin's board and Lowell Township's board and say, give us who you think.
I think you look for volunteers, just like any other board that we have downed, there'd be volunteers, and we'll probably look at for them to serve a minimum of two years on this board as the startup. I don't know if we can do three, but something we can talk about later, but at least have that board two to three years so there's an establishment of how that looks. I think that's the way.
And it's going to be like, I would imagine, so far, the committee we have now is full of law, like Light and Power. You go there and you got to learn a ton of stuff, but once you're good there, you want to stay because you're so, you know, how hard it is to transfer that light power knowledge over to.
Exactly.
You're invested, and it's the showboat, so you're invested anyway if you live here, but I don't know what this insurance.
When are you looking to make those additional people get added to the committee?
I don't know. We're having a meeting on Wednesday morning.
Yep.
Yeah, I guess we can get you some answers when we can.
I just wonder because if these extra people are going to be part of the team making decisions.
I don't think we've been able to publicize it yet to looking for somebody from Lowell and Virgin Township. I think we're set on the city right now with the five. It would just be adding maybe those two at large from outside the city is what we'd really need to look at as to start it. Twice a year.
I think it would be a committee vote, too. You're not going to appoint somebody who doesn't care of the showboat.
You're going to have a president, and all those being invited or voted on in that board.
Are you going to be on, you're on the fundraising committee, are you going to be on the showboat?
I am on that because I attend on Wednesdays at this point, but I don't know if I will be a liaison because we don't have that, or if I will be, I could be an active Lowell citizen and be on it as well unless I have to be the rep from.
So, right now, you're representing the council, right?
I would say my interest more lies towards the council at this point.
And he's fundraising committee, and he's a resident, and he's on the chair.
Right.
He's a wealth of knowledge, and I don't think you want to have a committee without Jim on it regardless.
I'm running on it.
Well, if everybody's, I'm willing to stay on that for a couple years. That's why I think it's important for that two-year thing, and then we can see what happens. And also depends on if I happen to get reelected and whether at that I would just be a citizen at large versus a member of this board. So, we'll have to wait and see what happens if they'll remember.
But there will always be somebody from the city council on it?
And in that bar. It's kind of like.
That is the intent.
Yes, exactly. They don't have a vote, but they'll be there for, to help out.
It's kind of like Light and Power and HTC, just now. We can't vote on Light and Power, but we can put her, we can give her two cents.
They ever listen.
Exactly.
Charlie's worst.
Well, Marty needs to vote on the, as at-large.
I have voted on Fire already, it's a voting system. So, it's all how you make the board up. I don't think there's requirements whether you go. You can represent whoever, only whoever you don't.
I believe that this risk is very low of us paying for it today and not getting money back. My personal belief.
Good. Well, I'm constantly surprised that no one from the showboat committee comes to any of these meetings. We continue to request that they be here, but.
Maybe they think that I'm the rep, which is fine, and I'll be more than able to bring it back.
I mean, it doesn't matter.
Yes.
Okay, does somebody want to make that motion then to purchase the insurance and cost not to exceed $33,850, and have Jessica draft up a repayment agreement? Once the LLC is formed, I guess, how would you word it like that? Yeah, well, seek reimbursement for Lowell Showboat Six once they become, recognize a nonprofit organization by the state of Michigan.
And if not, then we can deal with it, right?
We'll deal with it as quickly as we have, yeah. They will get recognized, it's just they'll take time.
Right. I just, we sat here, and weekly, we say how much money we spent, clip on the showboat, and we haven't spent a dime. Too long, too many things have happened where they've gone back and it makes board members look like fools, and I don't want to be made a fool. So, I hope they do. I hope they.
Well, I think it would be not prudent at all to not insure it, and we kind of have no, I mean, there's $3 million worth of floating thing out there.
I think that it's important to say that we all know that we're stuck between rock and hard place here. I think it's important to say that we've all learned a lesson about planning something for our city, and free, I think it's important to speak out loud that I'm trusting that board to pull through and to vote the way that they said that they were going to. And whether I'm reelected in November or not, I'm still going to be in Lowell, and it's still going to be my tax-paying dollars, and I'm still going to care about it. So, I hope they feel the same way.
Nobody wants?
Well, I'll make the motion to go ahead and pay the insurance.
I will reluctantly support.
Motion, and a sec. Any other discussion? Sue?
Mayor DeBoer?
No.
Councilmember Salisbury?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
No.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
All right, chief, you're up. Downtown traffic control.
Is that on now?
Yep.
Okay. I was going to read you the memo I sent to the council. It says that, "May I send Mayor DeBoer on city council, a memo announcing a plan to traffic our downtown area to constrain its speed violators. As far as this plan, I told you, I would first look at traffic crash, traffic stop and citation statistics, gather speed word data, conduct a formal in-house traffic study, and advertise on social media about speed enforcement." All these things were completed, and most has already been given to the council. For the past 10 days, from May 27th to June 6th, I directed our patrol officers to dedicate 90 minutes of their 12-hour shift to conduct speed enforcement in the downtown area between Jefferson and Hudson. They were directed to conduct 45 minutes of enforcement within the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 10:00 a.m., 2:00 p.m. and 4:00 p.m., 8:00 and 10:00 p.m., and 2:00 a.m. and 4:00 a.m. Our officers were directed to record the speed for each passing vehicle, stop anyone over 31 miles an hour, and cite anyone over 35. For the most part, this was completed. There were a few days where they were unable to do this because of calls for service, and we did have the Pride Festival on Saturday. Attached to our results of our enforcement conducted, we, being the police department, recorded 6,011 cars. We stopped 12 cars for speed, issued six citations for speeding. We also know that the overall average speed of the traffic is 25.54 miles per hour in the downtown area. Our directed patrol efforts consumed 24 hours of patrol time with additional two hours for tabulation and downloading the speed signs. Along with our directed patrol, we placed four cones to mark the mid-block crossing. These cones are placed in the street at 9:00 a.m. and are recovered at 9:00 p.m. We know these were noticed by, we know that our efforts were noticed by the public from their posts on social media. They were either complaining, or they were in support of our efforts. Speed word data was gathered, and that is attached as well. Side-by-side comparison shows no real noticeable difference in driver behavior due to our enforcement efforts during May 26th to June 6th dates. We compared with the data that we gathered from April to May. The 85th percentile speed, a measure that's used by the M.D.A. to set speed limits, were consistent before and after we started our enforcement efforts. I do believe the cones are slowing traffic and making drivers more aware of the mid-block crossing. We changed the cones to orange at the advice of Marty to what confusing our out-of-town visitors using the green cones and grand rapids, they automatically give the pedestrian a right of way so that we didn't want people walking right out front of traffic. A crosswalk, as I've learned, is a shared intersection between pedestrians and the motor and public. It's up to both the driver and the pedestrian to ensure the right of way is clear before proceeding. This is from our UTC manual, and each is to yield to the other depending on circumstances. The rules, these rules state the following, and I listed pedestrians' right of way to crosswalk and passing for other vehicles that want a passive vehicle to stop for pedestrian to crosswalk. Basically, the Michigan Motor Medical Code, which is what we use the majority of the time to enforce traffic, does not address mid-block crosswalks, but UTC does, so we have to go with that. We've adopted that as our traffic ordinance, so we have to go by these rules. Basically, what the rules state is if a pedestrian is approaching the crosswalk and about to cross the street, a vehicle has to yield or right of way if they have time. But it's also pedestrians' responsibility to make sure the coast is clear before they step off the curb. So, it's kind of almost like a four-way stop where you got to look both ways before you go. Same thing with the driving, people driving down the street. You've got the signs out there from M.D.A. We put the cones out there, and they're going to stay out there until they tell us we can't put them out there anymore. So, I think this has made everybody aware of the crosswalk. It's slowing traffic, especially down through this stretch of street, and through our traffic site that we did when we were out there. We, like I said, we wrote, out of 6,000 cars, we wrote six tickets for speeding. And then we gathered our speeds stuff. We see the spreadsheet there. Nothing really changes whether we were out there or not enforcing speed. And we weren't being sneaky about it either. We were parking right out on the curb so everybody could see us, so we could have a clear shot with the radar just to track vehicles, so. We all, I'm still encouraging our guys to get out there, you know, DC on Main Street. know, DC on Main Street, so we keep everybody aware that they gotta slow down.
Are you receiving any complaints during social district hours or during Pride about being unable to cross? Generally, when I'm downtown.
No, I actually had a work the other night, so I'm working around there, too. So I did see a couple near misses where people just walk off the curb and not pay attention. But then I see people hitting their brakes when they see someone standing, just standing on the sidewalk, and then they wave and cross. So this is something I guess we all gotta get used to. So I think more people, the more people drive through town, and if there's any way we can get those lines repainted on the street would be awesome. Put a light over it at night so people can see people standing on the sidewalk.
Do we have to go through the state for all that?
I don't know. I don't know about the lighting.
Because it's a state highway?
Believe you do.
Because they yelled at us about the speed signs, right?
What, in your memo, you, you called that light by name?
It's a Hawk light. We can't, we can't, we can get one of those if you wanna raise the speed limit to forty-three here.
Oh, no. Well, one, one thing I really noticed, too, is not just crossing it after the thing, but if I park across from, let's say Sneakers, I'm going to Main Street, I, I don't go up and around. I see people going across. It's so much of that's happening as well.
And if that person, if something happens, then that person's fault, because they gotta go to the nearest crosswalk and cross the street. So, and they even stopped for a family of ducks last night, so that was nice.
People are generally pretty nice, especially if you're in the back of downtown. They, they see us standing there, and they generally will stop for you.
And if the town's busy, the traffic is crawling anyway, so.
And you just.
I appreciate the clarifications. I think one of your comments from last meeting kinda freaked people off, and you said that if you're walking across the street and you get hit by pedestrians, you're on the fault. So I really.
That was my mistake, so.
Yeah, no, and I, I appreciate you sharing with us your lesson learned and announcing it, so everybody can hear what we're supposed to be doing at the crosswalk, because it is a topic for conversation.
It's a shared responsibility. They got, drivers gotta keep an eye out on some of the people crossing the street.
That I can deal with.
I can tell you, a couple of years ago, I did a story with Wood TV about the same issue, and I, I blurbed the, the Motor Vehicle Code, with which present, and police partners always follow. I can tell you from experience with the Motor Vehicle Code and the Uniform Traffic Code. When I was in the police academy, they would tell you the Uniform Traffic Code, oh, don't worry about that, that's the state police. You just deal with the Motor Vehicle Code. And so that was always what I, what I always knew. And when I met, shortly thereafter that story with Wood TV, I met with MDOT, and MDOT pulled the Uniform Traffic Code out and said, why are you saying this on TV? Because we enforce the Motor Vehicle Code. I'm like, your ordinance is also enforce the Motor, the Uniform Traffic Code. Oh, so that's where I learned. And I probably should've stepped in for Chris when he said it, but I didn't, so.
What happened to Main Street that's a state highway? It's not the easiest hurdle to.
No.
No, but like I said, I appreciate the clarification.
I was told Friday evening by someone that there was a rear-end accident at the crosswalk? Did that happen?
That, that could be. I don't, I, I didn't look back at the reports.
Okay. I, I was surprised I didn't hear anything.
I saw, I saw one police officer with a car.
You saw what?
One police officer with a, with a car, a pedestrian's car, somebody's car, on Friday. So something nice new happened. I don't know what happened.
Any other questions for the chief? All right. Thanks, chief. New business, two vacation days accrued, Michael.
Last year, we completed our Michigan Municipal League Classification and Compensation Study, and one of the items suggested was to consider the amount of vacation time accrued for longer-serving non-union department directors. For many years, once you reach your twelfth year of service, an individual receives twenty days of vacation. However, it did not increase beyond that amount if you had additional years of service. In our current IDW contract and our local police officers collective bargaining agreement, the city agreed to the amount, additional amount of days as follows. For twenty years of service, they receive twenty-one year, twenty-one days. For twenty-one years of service, they receive twenty-two days. Twenty-two years of service, they get twenty-three days. Twenty-three years of service, twenty-four days. Twenty-four years of service, twenty-five days. I'm requesting the same benefit be provided to the non-union and department director staff. This would in no way change the amount of vacation time employees can cash out once they sever employee, employed over the city of Lowell. The city allows employees to cash out no greater than twenty days vacation time when they leave the city. I'm not recommending any changes to this procedure. Last year, every full-time employee reached down his or future pension multiplier from two-point-five percent to two-point-oh percent. That was last fall. This was negotiated with, with both collective bargaining units, and the vacation increase was part of what we gave the unions to get what we needed with our, with our pension and retirement healthcare issues. The non-union and department directors did not have the luxury to negotiate this, as they are not entitled collective bargaining rights. So in essence, the best, the benefit was taken away from them without negotiation, which we are allowed to do. I believe the non-union and department directors should be given this benefit, as I believe this would only influence four current employees at the moment. This would, this causes no increased cost to the general fund budget, as we do not replace these positions when someone charges a vacation day. I recommend the Lowell City Council approve the published increase to vacation days based on years of service for non-union and department director employees.
Well, I'm, I'm for it. And last time we, not we, but last time the city decided they were gonna do different stuff for union and non-union employees, it was something else. So I'll make the motion. I'm gonna approve the increase to vacation days for non-union and department director employees.
I'll support.
Any other questions for Mike? Sue?
Councilmember Salisbury?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Chief, sale of the motorcycle.
I lost my notes here. We have the, I think you got the thing in your packet, two thousand twelve BMW bike. We, we got this a few years ago from, through the ten thirty-three program. The only cost to us was driving to Wash to pick it up. We've got two bikes at the time. We sold one of them through RepoCast, because we didn't use it, and Gordy didn't like it. Gordy, Gordy, Gordy Lauren is the only officer that's qualified through the motorcycle school. Right now, he's a full-time detective, and it's not practical to have a motorcycle cop on when you've only got one officer working for shit, because it's hard to take somebody to jail on a motorcycle. So we need two officers on. We don't use the bike. It's been sitting idle for over a year now. Still runs, still in good shape. We just had it downfitted from all the police gear. We'd like to sell it, and we're, what our plan is to sell it through is called One Way Auto. It's a dealer, it's a used car dealership that Gordy Lauren works with. He does our salvage inspections. Takes us out of the picture as part of who we sell to. They sell it. We make, we make the money on it. I think the Luba value was eighty-seven hundred. I'm not sure how much we would ask the dealership to sell for. We were, we're not gonna set the price. We're gonna ask them, we want so much out of it. What we like to use the money for is if we get it, we need a speed trailer. The portable speed sign that we used to have, we still have, but it doesn't work anymore. It's too old. But we, we've been looking at purchasing one of those, and that would help go towards the purchase of a speed trailer that we could park in people's yards if they wanted to keep an eye out for us. So we're asking the city council to allow us to sell the motorcycle, and hopefully use the money towards the speed trailer.
Our purchase policy does allow this. We just need permission from the city council before we sell it, and then we can notify you of the amount once the sale's complete. If it goes to auction, it'll be automatically sold.
So we get it for free and sell it for eighty-eight hundred bucks.
In essence, it's very well possible.
This motorcycle ought to be paid for by us, too.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep. It's not doing anything?
No.
Is that normal policy that we have to prove the sale of these?
Yes.
That's kind of law.
Yeah, our purchase policy, the way we've done it in the past is normally, we set out, if we set our police cars out for auction, or we set them up, we usually do a bidding for those, and then you come back and approve them. This is kind of different, because it would go through an auction service, but this is the exact same thing we did when we sold the military jeep. And we did the same exact thing with the, with the previous motorcycle. So we're doing the same thing we've done.
And that's all departments even, as the, probably something there.
We've done the same here with the fire authority, too.
Correct.
I don't, I don't recall us selling something.
Yeah, we've sold, we sold, we sold a couple of police cars. We haven't done that in a while.
We just voted on the car that we're replacing, right? We just gave.
Well, we haven't sold that. Yeah, we purchased the car, but we haven't sold. We normally.
We authorized the.
Yeah, purchased it.
The, the electoral.
Then we authorized getting rid of the old one, didn't we?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
No, we haven't done that yet.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so one other thing to talk about, too, is we do, we have scales for motor carrier. Those were also purchased through salvage funds about five years ago. At the time, Detective Lauren was working, was, was full-time road patrol, and he was trained in, in the scales, and the, and the scales were used, were purchased for him to be able to do motor carrier. He, being his duties as full-time detective, he does not have time, or really doesn't be able to acquire the hours to continue with the, with the scales. We have no officers that are trained in the scales. We haven't used the scales for a long time. We, we have an offer right now, or we have somebody interested in purchasing them. We'd like to sell, sell them if we would get, was it five thousand dollars for them? We'd like to sell, and, 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 and that money could also be used for a speed trailer.
Can that turn out to be like a ton more work than benefit? Does it mean you're fighting with people if they're overweight before you even get?
I, I, I can tell you from experience.
It takes two.
Yeah, remember, yeah. Motor carrier, if you have, let's just say, if you had multiple officers on the road, motor vehicle could be a, motor carrier could be a valuable tool for your community. With one officer on patrol, I think motor carrier is a little bit more difficult. When you, I never did motor carrier when I worked the road, but I, my department did have motor, had Waymasters. And I can tell you that when they did, when they did, when they did a, um, an inspection, it was, usually it was quite a long time, and that, that vehicle was out of service for a very long time. And we had, where, where I control, we had a major highway come through McComb County, and we also had a couple of major freeways as well. So that was the reason they had them, and the town just paid for them.
Deal with them all the time, don't they?
But it's, it's very, it's very, to, to do a portable way on the road, it is, you could, you could take two, three hours doing a way.
The county has a Waymaster, too, don't they, on the state police motor carrier? People are around here all the time.
Correct.
All the time.
They're always stopping semis out here, weighing them up, checking their paperwork.
Yeah. I, I think.
How about we take the money from this and pay for the insurance for the trailer? Bad idea?
No, I didn't say that.
Well, I thought it might ease the pain. And then if we get paid back, then we can spend it on the trailer with a sign on it.
Can, can we make an amendment to this to include the scales tonight if it's possible to sell it so we don't have to come back and get five thousand dollars?
Do the motion for the bike and the scales.
Yeah, that's true.
There's nothing to it. They, they do all the work. They find the buyers or the auctions. Shane Shannon did it with the, and Ron did it with the fire trucks. We just approved it.
And based on this, I, I'm not real opposed to, to have the city take care of that. I'm not sure why it has to come to us for such a small amount, and if you're gonna sell something that would get fair market value, it could be up to the city managers to have to go ahead and do it, and maybe not come to us anyways. It's minor, but so, this is my opinion.
I think we, it comes to us, right, Mike? Because of this city.
I believe it's a charter provision.
Yeah.
I believe it's a charter provision.
Attorney.
This is addressed in the, in the city charter, and then the ordinance, and then a policy. So there's three layers, and actually, your latest purchasing policy is from two thousand nineteen. And it is supposed to come to you first, and then it goes on to public auction, and Mike has to go through a procedure. So you could change that, but that's how it is.
I think we should leave that alone.
But, right, and, and the charter provision, you really can't go around, so.
I mean, the dollar threshold is very low, I notice. It's like, Mike can only do five hundred.
Five hundred dollars, yeah.
That's pretty low, but.
But we could change the dollar.
You could change the dollar threshold.
And then that money goes into your salvage fund?
I, I believe it, going to our equipment fund, I think.
For the bikes, right?
The bike was, the bike was, the bike was not paid for from salvage. The bike was paid for.
Scales were.
The scales were from salvage, so that money should go back to salvage.
What if they're using it for the trailer?
Right, but they were intending to use, they were intending to use the trailer. They were intending to use the money from, from salvage for the trailer, is what they were intending to do.
So you're just putting it in and taking it?
Correct.
Right, yeah.
Motion to sell the bike and the scales.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support. Any other questions? Sue?
Councilmember Yankovic?
No.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salisbury?
Yes.
All right, next, Avery, West Monroe Road closure for the expo.
Yep, Friday, June eleventh, beginning at five PM. For Saturday, June twelfth at six PM for, for purpose of the food concessions. This is the same area. We normally close for the Riverwalk. I'm recommending that this be closed. We also have the same request for Riverwalk. However, the, it'll be, the, the closure on Avery at that point will go from Avery, from east of Monroe to Jefferson Street, Washington Street, north of Maine, to the Lowell Area School's parking lot for the Cruz Inn. That's on Saturday. Also, on that Friday, will be the same area of Monroe, from Avery to Monroe, from Monroe for the.
And Riverwalk is Thursday, too, right?
Correct, yeah, yeah. Expo's just, Expo's just Saturday this year.
And the street closure.
But the street closure will be Friday, begin Friday night, and then the Riverwalk is Thursday, July eighth through Saturday, July tenth.
Okay. First motion for expo.
I have a question. Is, is that still considered a Lowell Area School for coupon?
The Runson Building?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes. And I'm talking about unity there.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, unity.
No, no.
This over there. Okay, gotcha.
I make a motion to grant a request to close Avery Street.
I'll support.
Any other discussion for expo right?
For expo.
Sue?
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salisbury?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Cliff for Riverwalk, sending motion?
I'm on the fence, but I'll go with you.
I'll support.
Okay.
Please, please, support.
All right. Any other questions for Cliff? Sue?
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Councilmember Salisbury?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers?
Yes. All right, Warden Commissioner, we're, Leah.
I got nothing. Anything that's coming up for the next, get here.
Chambers, same thing.
Jim, I, I four-hour board meeting on Thursday. Light power. Cliff?
I prepared a lengthy statement. No, I'm just kidding. Actually, some cool news. At the historical, there's some new owners on two fourteen East Main, which is the station salon is the floor, the bottom. Anyway, this couple bought it, and they plan on living on the third floor. They're gonna keep the hair salon there, but they're, the reason they came to the HDC is they're gonna take the fire escapes and stuff off the front, and they're gonna update the windows. And they're gonna do some improvements on the back, but nobody cares about that. But the front end will be looking good here shortly.